To order, first order on the work session tonight is electric service standards discussion. Mr. Michael Allison, how you doing, Michael?
Fine, how are you all?
You sure you're doing alright? Yeah, what you did there, skiing accident?
It means I was back in Colorado. No, actually, I'm toward the meniscus. So, I just wanted to take some time, I think Lisa and I had talked a little bit. One of the things I noticed was, we didn't really have a set of standards for when people are doing new construction, or remodeling things, or security lighting, street lighting, things like that. And it's kind of a whoever happened to answer the phone that day is what happened. So, what we did is, as a group, we kind of took down and developed a set of standards that covers a lot of those things. Where we want the meters, how far clearance issues are for the meters, where we want them above height, how many security lights we'll put on a resident, a couple of little streetlight issues that we've been running into. And we talked to Eric Cortinas, and he said, you know, the best way to get it so that it's enforceable is to get it included in the code of ordinances. So, presented it to you all this time, and if you guys agree, I'd like to put it on the agenda for next time, and then moving forward.
So, this is not, this is not code?
Not yet.
Well, I mean, it's not part of the building code, not, not part of the IBC.
It's basically how we want. So, you know, we need to have three feet in front of an electric meter. If somebody wants a security light, what we'll do to give them a security light. If somebody wants a street light, the requirements for streetlights, that kind of thing.
Okay. And council, you should have this in your, in your package, and there's a, a lot of technical discussion in there. So, if we were to, we would add this to our, basically, the ordinance that adopted the...
The electric...
I forget which IBC we're at, are we at 2018, 17, 19?
I think when Lisa and I were talking, we put it in the electric, like, section 26 or whatever that was, the next available electric thing.
Can you, what would be the pushback to this? What's the downside? I mean, it makes sense, but what would be, if somebody was going to argue against it, what would be their argument?
Honestly, the only argument I could see is, one of the things that I'm asking for is compaction tests for transformers before we set a transformer. Because we've got quite a few that have settled, and then we have to go back and level them out, or things like that. So, one of the things that's included in there...
Is that like in subdivision?
New commercial. We'll typically set the transformers for residential.
Okay.
But new commercials, when the contractor's pouring the pad, I'd like to get a compaction test, just to make sure that that transformer's not going to sink.
How expensive is that, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
Compaction test, just to see whether they put a transformer...
They're not that bad.
Not, it's not something that they're going to come back and say, "We just cost them $10,000 on a project," right?
No, no, no.
A few hundred dollars?
Come back and fuss, because they've got to go do it.
Couple hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think about a couple hundred, last I've checked.
See, I'm used to streets, not a pad. We test the hell out of the street.
And basically, just codifies, you know, the things we want to see when we're hooking up electric.
And I imagine that something like that might be kind of a work in progress, too.
Yeah.
It can be added as you, as you go along.
In fact, after I submitted it, I thought of another section, but I'll save that for next year, which would be...
I could see where this could go on and on and on.
Which would be renewables, you know, how we want to handle renewable energies.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to have some uniformity when deciding how to handle these things, but as is the case in everything we do, there's always special circumstances or special cases. Do you feel that this gives you the, the ability to operate, if there are special circumstances, to make sections when they be?
Yeah, there's a lot of sections in there that says, "We'll do it this way," or per the electric superintendent or their designee.
That's a good thing to do.
So, because, yeah, I understand, there's a lot of special circumstances, and sometimes you can't quite get three feet, maybe two and a half is good. You know, if there's nothing really behind it, or something like that, a four-foot fence in those situations.
Any other questions, uh?
I just say, Mike, it looks like you've put a lot of, a lot of effort into this, appreciate that, and just...
I've probably looked at it.
Is it fairly common, commonplace to have...
I was surprised we didn't have.
Okay.
To be honest.
Thank you.
So, everywhere I've been, and mostly utilities I've ever dealt with, has a set of standards. In fact, where I came from, the standards alone were that thick.
Alright, I appreciate that.
Obviously, we don't need that here.
Alright, you think you can, you know, have this in a, in a form of an ordinance, or...
It's ready.
Is it ready? Do y'all feel comfortable introducing it at the next meeting?
I do. And I'm available if you think of any questions, just give me a call.
Yeah, my, my only concern would just be of something that's, that we have to come back and relax, you know, later, but as long as you have, you know, some kind of elastic clause in there.
Yeah, we've got a lot of flexibility. I think the opening paragraph says, you know, it's not intended to cover all situations on the very first paragraph.
Okay. Alright, well, it sounds like the council's saying that bring us that amendment for the ordinance to the next, next meeting. And I'd encourage everybody to just look it over and...
Yeah, give me a call if you have any questions.
And if you need to amend it between now and then, just try to, just have the mayor or you email it to us, and we can look over anything.
Yeah, then another section, I always guess it's going to be a lot, I'll save it for next year.
Okay.
Because I'm, I gotta talk to AMEA about some renewables, how they do them, because it's weird, how they do renewables.
Okay.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you, Mike.
Next, Mr. Peterson, discussion of water and sewer connection fees and expenses.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I think we'll press the reset button to back in, what, February, we discussed this prior to? And basically, what we're talking about doing is looking at the capacity requirements to provide a service to a single-family residential connection. And you look at that being maybe 225 gallons a day, and what you look at in terms of what the charge is to connect to the water system is what, that part of what it takes to have a well, supply water to a treatment plant to treat it, and a tank to store it, and some transmission capability to direct it into the distribution system. You come up with a value that it costs us to provide that amount of water to that one connection. And so, that would be in water, actually, in water and sewer both, we've got $1,500 that would apply to a capacity charge. That would be a connection fee to get the available water, or the wastewater conveyed from their house into the plant and treated. And then you would start building on what that same capacity equates to as you get to larger meters. So, if they put a one-inch meter on a, a commercial or multifamily residential, then there's a multiplier for that, that's two and a half times the equivalent residential connection. If you put a two-inch meter on, the multiplier is seven and a half times, because you have to provide or make available that volume of water to that location through infrastructure improvements that are able to deliver that water for that particular location. So, that's the premise of how all this is set up. And then, what we looked at, too, is, you know, out-of-town customers, we're having to extend further out into the system to capture those markets. And so, the transmission and production capability has to extend beyond what would be the normal city limit area, fairhope. So, there would be multiplier of one and a half times those same values for the capacity Each one of these has different provisions for installation cost as well. If we run a three-quarter inch water service, well, you know, we, we would charge $500 for that installation fee. There are some places within new subdivisions that water services already run, so they would just pay the capacity charge since the meter's there. If somebody wants to build on a vacant lot, on a county road, or any other street that water had not previously been provided, then they would pay the capacity charge plus the installation charge. So, that's what that relates to there, and then there's some basic information on what type of material we would prefer to have, or expect to see when they run sewer laterals from the main to the property line. Showing where we're going to ask for a cleanout at the property line when they do tie on to the sewer line. And in the sewer, if we participate with a developer to upgrade pumping capacity, or to extend an off-site force main from, you know, a, a location where a developer may want to develop, and where we can get back to a, a location within our existing system where capacity is available for that transmission, then we may upsize that force main, or we may participate in some of it, but anybody who develops between the, the developer who has built that, and where our connection was, they, they will pay an accessibility charge, basically, that says, "If, if you're going to have to tie on to this force main that we built, then you're going to pay us." And in charge of a force main, it would be $15 times what, what would be the square root of the property, in terms of area that it would serve. If it's a gravity connection, then it would be $35 times the square root of the area of the property, which is to say that that would eliminate them from having to build a lift station themselves, and that we're planning well enough in advance so that we can accommodate as much as we can out of each drainage basin where a lift station would provide service. And so, that's the premise with, with all of these different, it's a different concept than what we have now with capacity charges.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I, I finally got back, it was, it was a lot on water, and I finally got through the old ordinances and the multiple revisions, and made it to the sewer, so, so let me understand, if you are, if you, just give you an example, if you had a meter size of one inch...
Right.
And you had water and sewer, the capacity asset fee would be $37.50, and then, and if you needed the installation, it would be $7.50 for the water, and then for the, if you also required sewer, then you would have a capacity asset fee of $37.50 for that as well?
Correct.
So, that the $37.50, the $7.50 and the $37.50?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that would be for commercial. That would be a commercial requirement with a one-inch water meter.
Right. But now, if, if the single-family...
Right.
The three-quarter inch meter size, it has, under multifamily, just one, it's the same as the commercial.
Right, we're only going to allow one house to be served off a three-quarter inch meter. Now, if you've got a duplex complex, and you want to put a one-inch meter, we would allow it to four single-family residential connections on that as a duplex type, you know, two duplexes could be served by one meter. And, you know, and we'll try to discourage people from doing that, basically, because then somebody's got to be responsible for water bill, for what, for people, you know, who may not have to pay a water bill, could wind up using a lot of water.
Okay, so the three-quarter inches is limited to one, always one?
Correct.
And then, two, three, or four is that one inch?
Correct.
Would be the example that I gave?
Yes, so, so if, it's a one inch, and now, and now, if you've got a single-family house, and you just want a bigger meter, well, then we'll charge you the single-family connection fee, and then charge you more to install a one-inch meter. The $750 would be the installation charge.
That would be my question, because sometimes houses are set too far from the water line to, for a three-quarter to accommodate, so they'd have to do a one inch.
Yeah, they're welcome to put a one inch in, we'll just charge them the installation rate on a one-inch water meter.
Even for a single-family residence?
For a single-family residence. And that's the same with, when you get to multifamily, you know, we're, if you have a, an RV park or a hotel, we have multipliers built into that, and an apartment would be two-thirds of, you know, if you have 60 apartments, then it would be the same as 40 equivalent residential units. And, and so, the multiplier would be 40 times the 1,500, and then they would be able to decide, well, I know you're saying that we can use a, a three-inch meter to serve that, but we might want a four-inch meter. Or what we would prefer to do is look at, well, let's get your distribution system in there where fire hydrants are located, where the buildings need them, and let's serve a master meter for a building instead of the whole complex. You know, if you've got a 20-unit build, and then we get you a two-inch meter for that, and then the next 20-unit build, and you can have a two-inch meter for that one, then you can better identify buildings that have higher usages, and it's a better way. And then we'll maintain the, the, the collection, the distribution system with fire hydrants inside the complex. And typically, there would be fire mains in there, too, which, you know, they would want to have fire services for those buildings, and I don't know that anybody who's in the apartment business wants to maintain a water distribution system on site. I don't, I don't think that's typically what, what their business model would, you know, have them do.
Well, these, these fees would go into a special account for future upgrades. You mentioned, say, you have a commercial application where you're going to have to put in eventually a lift station, you may not need it, and the first 10 units are built, but you might need it after 25 are built.
Right, and I don't know that we've said anything in the ordinance about directing those funds into any specific reserve account for capital improvements.
It, it seems that if we're going to go up on the fees and, and charge people, that it would, it would, it would be wise to put it in, in some kind of designated account so that it could be used for that intended purpose, right?
All, all the money in each department does go back into that department, and the fact that we do have all of this infrastructure for the next five years, we're going to be using all of it, doesn't matter what account it is. So, there, these funds used to not go specifically in each department. In fact, electric was typically tapped to pay for most everything for the city, so, you know, these funds are now exclusive to that utility revenue, and the fees and things like that, but they'll all be used for the infrastructure upgrades.
I think there's a different way that, that these fees are put into different reserve accounts now, and they may, and I can't remember them, but, but I think it would be wise to add some language as to where the diversion of those funds would go.
And we talked about, too, having possibly something reserved just for land acquisition for utilities, because that is something where, that will always be in the future, and right now, it's been kind of very reactionary, okay, we got to buy this piece of land for that and that piece of land, so we thought that would be good.
That's a good idea, you know, any, any reserve account does have, you know, an anticipated amount, you need to put in there annually for some future cost, and then when you, when you pay it out, you can say, well, yeah, we, we saved money for this roof, and now we need a new roof.
Right.
So, and I know that that, that, you know, we'll have to start somewhere with that. I, I don't know if that's something we can incorporate into an ordinance that would specify, and there may be, I'm looking at Kim back there, there may already be, we have so many different numbers in accounts, and it's a line item in the budget, and it's, you know, line 70020, and that means that that's what it is, but, and it may be just as simple as that, but even if that's, if that's, I know, if it's designated already...
It's not going to the city, you're welcome.
Yeah, that, that I would like to accomplish, but as far as dictating, we buy land, or we buy water plants, or we buy wells, or whatever, you know, I would prefer it to be capital improvements on a general basis, and that could be transmission lines, it could be, you know...
It could be a catch-all for...
Yeah, I think we can define what, what capital improvement for transmission and production could be, and I think as long as we fit that broad definition, we would be fine. And same thing with wastewater, you know, there would be plant improvements and lift stations and transmission systems for that.
What would be the split, was it 50% to that, or?
I think if you, if you're collecting them fee, I think 100% goes into the fund, but it allows you to use it for any of these items that, that are defined as part of what the capital improvement needs are for capacity.
I think we have, we have a fund for capital improvements, specific to each utility, and I think that's...
Right.
That makes sense, unless you want to fine-tune it later, but again, we need all of that right now, for the next five years.
Would you co-mingle the water and the sewer revenues?
I don't think we'd do that.
Or would you try to keep them separate?
They would be separate.
Okay. Counselor, what, what questions do you have?
Uh, the installation fees, did they change from what they are now to the new? Are they the same?
We, I think right now, we have a specific installation fee for three-quarters, one inch, and after that, I think it's based on the cost.
That means it's the same amount of money? I'm actually, I happened to be asked this today, on a buddy meeting. He wants to install a buddy meter, and he said it costs $500.
Right.
So, I'm looking at the $500, and thinking, well, that installation fee must not have changed, since I'm looking at the new.
No, it, it's just predicated on the average cost of a three-quarter inch service. It's, it had nothing to do with the existing buddy fee charge that we have now. But what we do want to do is get our accounting system set up where we can identify the cost of a three-quarter inch service, you know, and, and we can start projecting what those installation costs are, and then we can use those projections to change what it costs...
Of course, labor machines, more than $500.
When we start losing money on them, we can start changing what it takes to really do it. But right now, we just don't have the information available for it.
And again, this has got nothing to do with this, but can they hire an installation done? Or does the city have to do an installation for their meters?
I think we'll let anybody who's got the, the, the homeowner you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, they can hire somebody to do that. Now, we'd like to tighten up a little bit to where at least we're available on-site when they tap it.
Yeah, no problem.
But other than that...
Again, I was just asked this, it just happened to be today, this came up, so...
Yeah.
And you know who they want to hire?
No. Yours truly?
I'm hoping you say no.
Well, you can do it.
No, only, only the city can do it. I'll bail out.
Kevin, I was looking at some other language, so if you did, if you, if you mentioned this, I apologize, so the, currently, your three-quarter inch connection is, is $550, and, and this proposes it to be $500.
Right.
And the one-inch connection is currently $650, and that's proposed to be $750. So, and then, and the vast majority of cases, I'm going to assume, is single-family, it goes down by, that goes down by $50.
And the vast majority is single-family, or in subdivisions that already have services there. Now, the buddy meter's a different animal in that regard, because they, they come in, and some of the home builders, I understand, are, are putting an irrigation system onto their water system, well, guess what, they use a lot of water, and we charge sewer based on that water usage, and it doesn't take them a month or two to realize, if I'm going to irrigate my yard at that rate every month, I need, let's put the buddy meter in...
They wouldn't know why his rates were going up.
And, and get out of the, paying sewer from irrigation.
First thing I thought of, I said, "How many meters you got in your yard?" He said, "One." I said, "You need a buddy, you got an irrigation?"
Yeah.
I said, "You need a buddy meter, or the irrigation system to take the sewer off."
Or, you know, if they decide that they don't need to irrigate the yard, that's okay with us, too, really. I mean, that's conserving that resource, although, you know, suffers a little bit on the revenue side.
Well, Jay, I know you remember everything, so what, what, how did this stall in February? Do you remember? Had to be, it had to be Robert, he's not here.
Well, I think there was a little bit of apprehension on, when you start to get a big hotel complex, and let's equate it to one of the Grand Hotel size, there was a pretty significant amount of money required to, for the connection fee, for both gas or for both water and wastewater. But, and if I remember the conversation right, when you start looking at what it takes to build a, a hotel like the Grand Hotel, then the money we're talking about really isn't that significant to the entire project cost.
Well, it's not, and if I was going to try to sell it to them, I would say that it's, it's cheaper for us to do this than for you to go in and put in your lift stations and, and whatnot.
Oh, it absolutely is cheaper.
Solely for that, so it would say, it really does. It, it beats the, the other option that we could consider.
And we can look at what other places charge, and, and I think we'd be fairly consistent with how other places do that, and I can be happy to do some more research. Now that I got an administrative assistant, I can actually get that done quicker.
That's awesome.
What is the, what's your pleasure, counsel? It's the, probably the, I'm going to say the third time we've looked at this.
And I will say, the, the anticipated revenue based on about 400 connections, we're talking about somewhere in $350,000 range. I mean, if you had 400, the $900 difference between the 600 we charge now and the 1,500, you're looking at $360,000 with 400 connections, which is what I think is we're on target to meet, and it could be more than that, but, and that's on top of the 250 we already would have gotten, so, or 240, I guess.
Alright, counsel, I'm looking, looking at you guys for some direction.
And I will say that the mayor's correct, it looks like we're going to be using some money pretty quickly, and, you know, I don't know how much we got in the well, but if it runs dry, we're going to need to find some other mechanism to be trying to find it.
Yeah, I think it sounds good. I mean, I would love to know what Robert would have to say about it, since he's in instruction, but I think we should move forward.
I got a strong feeling we'll find out next meeting. Jay?
Yeah, let's, let's introduce it at the next meeting.
We'll look at some verbiage on where to put the money.
And there is some verbiage in the old ordinances, and I was just pointing that out to the clerk here, there's, there is some simple language, which is probably best for that, but it is stated.
Absolutely. And while I'm up here, real quick, we've gotten a quote for an odor control device for Twin Beach.
Yeah, I, I, one thing, though, is I'll back on this real quick, so mayor and, and Mr. Peterson, I would, just because there's some language that designates where this goes, I think you should look at that and, and state whether or not that still makes sense, because it's pretty simple.
Right.
And it may not be valid, and that's how I'm reading it.
But what we did is we projected very conservatively the outlay of money for the next five years with projected income, and again, it was very, very conservative, but we are going to need a very, you know, at least a year period where we're going to need to borrow money.
So, what I'm saying...
And then pay it back quickly.
So, this formula is not necessarily set in stone, because I told you there's some language in here, but anyway, take a look at it, it won't take you very long to decide.
We'll do that.
Alright, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, that's okay, we met with the residents around the Twin Beach lift station, unfortunately walked up on a, on a problem we had that we corrected, and hopefully, everybody understands that problems are going to happen, and we're going to address them as we find them, but the odor issue has been something that's been going on and on and on with, with the people that are in that area, and I've heard several people who ride by there and say they've noticed an odor problem. I've been by there several times, and I, you know, I mean, I don't know, everybody has a different tolerance for those kinds of things, and, and I appreciate that, but regardless of all of that, we want to be good neighbors, and, and we want to do the best we can to minimize our impact on anybody. And so, but this unit, they went out and took some sulfur, hydrogen sulfide gas detectors levels, and they've come up with a model, it's a 2050 dash 450 unit, that's, anyway, it's about $10,450 is what the unit is, and, and we're going to have to change out the...
$250,000?
$10,450,000 is the unit.
Wait a minute now.
$10,450,000?
I'm sorry, $10,450,000.
I knew that it was $10,000, and that's what I was like.
So, but anyway, we're, and it's got the activated carbon pack, packaging for the filtration, but I, I would like, I don't know if we can walk anything on tonight, but I do want to proceed with as much due diligence as possible to get this thing installed. The delivery's about three to four weeks, if, if we were to order it today.
And this is really just an ASAP fix on the smell, but the overall fix will happen in the course of the, all the infrastructure upgrades.
The $10,450 is for the dispensing system?
It's for the system to neutralize the odor coming out of the lift station.
And then we have to buy a, some product...
Well, they come with the cartridges, you know, the, but every three or four months, we're going to replace them, and I'm not sure what that value is, but...
Right, we probably are ordering that in bulk now, anyway, right? We would have that in stock?
Well, this is one of the first units we'll have that'll have those types of cartridges available to us. Right now, we're feeding a, a liquid chemical that neutralizes it in place, and, but, you know, that, that chemical can clog lines that feed it, and, and we can lose our feed rates because of that, the, the LMI pumps that are the feed pumps, that they can go bad, and so we really don't have a, a good maintenance... And so, we, we really don't have a, a good maintenance program for maintaining those systems, you know, day to day to day. And, and, and apparently, if, if one quits feeding, you find out about it pretty quickly. And, you know, to get the people that are around it that have the nuisance issues to call us is not something they do every day either. But they do complain when, and sometimes it's on the weekends when nobody's available really to, to respond that well. And it's, uh, our, our odor control contract with the BioMagic people, I'm going to guess, and Jay may correct me if I'm wrong, but it's somewhere in the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar range a year. And what I'd like to do is try to start to eliminate.
It's two twenty-five.
Ten thousand four hundred and fifty thousand.
Ten thousand four hundred and fifty thousand. Picking on you. It's two hundred and fifty thousand?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five? Maybe that's why we're losing some, having so many odor problems, we're not spending all the money.
Well, plus, I think that would serve, I think that serves Jay's house, Jay's house down there, I'm not sure.
But anyway, but.
Get that under control.
However much money that is, we, we hope to start to dwindle that down as we add these site-specific components to address the problems. And, you know, last year, we went, we had some budgeted items for odor control. And we were going to do kind of a test sample, mostly at the South Section Lift Station where we were close by. But we're working on this one, this one's become more of a priority now, and I think we just need to move on it.
Um, my question would be, and maybe you just mentioned something about it, but this is, this is a, is a quick fix for the odor that's being caused.
Correct.
What about what's, what, whatever underlying problem there is that's causing the odor? Is that, is that something that's going to be improved with the upgrades and so that there won't be?
Yeah, the, the side stream storage tanks that we're proposing for that location will, will basically replace that lift station. But there, there will be a vent system on that that'll have a similar unit like this on it that will, that we will just, that will be part of that infrastructure.
And, and I guess what I'm really trying to say, and I'm not doing a very good job of being clear about it, is I want to make sure there's not a safety issue that we're covering up with a deodorizer so that we're, you know, we put, we're kept in a natural gas, so it steams, so you know that it's there. If we're doing something to mask some hazardous condition by deodorizing.
No, I think it neutralizes the hydrogen sulfide. And I don't know the answer to your question specifically, but I think the whole purpose of that activated carbon is to absorb that hydrogen sulfide into the media that's in that filter.
And to answer your question, it doesn't do anything to mask, because when you have to go down to those tanks, no matter what you have, you have to air them out, no matter what. If you're going to work in those tanks, you air them out. So.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a day-to-day function to go down there. And so, but what you do, you have to perform work, like take the pumps out and replace piping and what have you down there. They'll put it, it's kind of like you see with the telephone companies, they'll put an air tank there. And what it does, it blows the air out of the top and circulates all, what I call clean air in there, it just circulates it in there for the time being while you're working in it. So no, it's not, you won't have a safety issue by masking this on a day-to-day issue, as far as people working it.
Do you have to have it open to atmosphere, prevent a vacuum in that type of system in these lift stations?
You can add an inline pump to it, and, and you can, you know, you can pump the air out of the wet well into this unit. But most of them are set up where as the water level rises in the wet well from the thing filling up, the, the gas escapes anyway. And then as it comes back down, it actually goes the other way. But, um, no, the, I don't think there's any real manipulation of the gases on the side, unless we decided we want to put force man.
I didn't know if you had to have a siphon in there to, 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 to allow the pumps to work properly without, you know, so that you, you, uh, so that you wouldn't just draw a vacuum, that you would draw the liquid and be able to pump it out, you know, just using atmospheric pressure.
Yeah, it's just atmospheric pressure coming in and out of the wet well that vents it, yeah.
Basically, the wet well has a vent system.
Yeah, that's what you're, that's what we're hooking up to.
It's already installed.
That's what we're hooking up to, is the vent system is there. And another thing is sealing all the different penetrations that are potentially going to leak and not make it through the filter. So we're going to be doing that as well.
See, I was asking the question, why does that sewer have such a direct odor around that lift station? As opposed, that's the same sewer that comes down to the lift station right outside the city bar, same exact sewer.
And, and if you talk to people who live next to the mall.
Well, I mean, it's there, but it's not as often as what the people around there are saying they have problems.
And we feed chemical in that Twin Beach Lift Station. Maybe the chemical we feed at the Grand Hotel doesn't work as well as it should be, but that's, you know, we, each, from County Road One to the Grand Hotel to Twin Beach to South Section, you know, it's kind of like the train.
Well, one explanation I was getting, I don't really follow this, but when it starts getting aired, aired out, so to speak, at one lift station, it's not as bad as, at the next one, and it's not as bad as the next.
That's correct. And, and one of the other techniques we're looking to do is to buy.
It hurts.
Right. And one of the techniques we're looking to do is buy compressors, and we're talking about putting air diffusers in the wet well themselves to do exactly what you're describing. And we're going to, we're going to test.
You're actually starting the process of treatment as you're doing an aerobic.
And the side stream storage tanks, we're talking about air rating, pre-eration, to do the same thing as well.
So you load on your plants, you're not going to be hurt much.
Would it help if we put the infiltrate, or the? A line that drops the sewer into the lift station? If you drop, put an elbow on and drop it down to where the sewer only hits inside the liquid, in other words, it doesn't hit air, doesn't aerate? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know how much it would help, but I understand that is a help.
I'm using like the trap in your toilet.
Yeah, basically what you do is it's not falling and circulating the air, right? It falls directly inside a pipe.
I think you'd have a tee that would be.
The whole time, and it rises up.
That's why you don't smell, that's why you need to sink trap in a, in a trap in your toilet.
Yeah, I think you'd have a tee on that.
The problem with that method though, is because it's going to aerate somewhere, you'd have to do it on every lift station all the way down or somebody would get hit.
Yes.
Sooner or later.
And we're, we're going to make a bigger commitment to study and the cause and effect of all that.
Kicking around some ideas, trying to figure out, you know, again, it just made, it was odd to me that, uh, since my shop is right there next to that lift station, it's rare, you know, I smell that or anything over there, I thought that was strange. It's the same sewer, so that's why I got to ask you this question.
Well, one of the first complaints I had.
I can put it in the lift station, I don't know much about why it stinks.
I know, one of the first complaints I had from odor anywhere was Ms. Bum talking about that particular station and not being able to sit down.
A lot of times, it's every day, you know, in reality, it happens once a month, once or twice a week, twice a month.
Well, and we, I've been here again, though, we want to be good neighbors.
That's right, anything we can do to fix it, we want to fix it.
And that's, that, that's our goal.
You and I have had this discussion, and that's absolutely correct.
So that's what we're, and I don't, we'll, we'll bring in a.
Jay, what's your thoughts on introducing that, or walking that on? You want to wait two weeks?
I'll walk it on.
The ten thousand four, if you got a, have you got something?
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Ten thousand four hundred and fifty thousand? Have you, have you got something drafted, Richard, or can you draft us a resolution real quick?
I can try.
Yeah, I mean, this is not something that waiting two weeks is going to, I mean, I don't know that.
You're not going to change your mind?
Yeah, and I don't know that there'll be any objection to making it smell better. So, that's generally my concern, is that when we change price or change service, I want people to have the opportunity to come object if they so please. I don't know that I'm going to give any objections.
They're going to object the other way.
Correct.
Yeah.
We wait.
If you wait.
I feel like, I feel like delaying would be unpopular.
And then lastly, we, we did bid the, uh, Fairup Avenue, Fairwood, Bayou Drive, and transmission line into the plant, uh, a week and a half ago. And Bone Construction, is, are you familiar with the results of the bid?
No, not.
Bone Construction was the low bidder who has an outstanding reputation, and we're happy to be able to, uh, recommend them as the low bidder. Uh, but the price tag was two million four hundred, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So it's just over two million dollars for that transmission project. And of course, that takes us all the way into the plant to the headworks, which is, uh, we're, we're eliminating two parallel runs of, uh, gravity line that go into the plant property near the flooring company there on North Section. And truth of the matter is, we still hadn't found the manholes that those lines connect to yet, but we're working to find them.
And I'll mention again that, I've, I've said it before, that I've learned another level of patience when we talk about restore funds. But that is part of it, that some of the rehabilitation for those funds, I don't know, we, we hope to have them by the end of the year. But you can't do any of the work ahead of time.
Will they reimburse you for rehabilitation?
They don't reimburse, that's why I said is that, that part is, you know.
Right.
The only thing, you could do planning and things like that, that we would want to push forward anyway. But the bulk of it, we do, we'd like to, to, but again, we discussed it too, this is not even going to cover all of it, so.
Well, I know as we get deeper into some of the lift station upgrades that we'll be looking at as we move out, and, and they won't be so much about trying to increase capacity if we can reroute some force mains and, and bypass them with what currently is fed into those stations, like East of the Sun would be one. That would be a rehabilitation effort that we should be able to, but, you know, and I don't want to put off doing things that we know we need to do because we might be funding from another source, but, but I think that we will find there is plenty.
Because it's going to be more than that anyway, the cost.
That we will still have on the board to do by the time the restore money comes in.
Correct.
And we, we recently bid and had the point repair contract, you know, awarded. So we're working on our first level of those projects right now. And trying to focus on the Middle Street area, the Valley Lift Station area, where, you know, we feel like we keep making progress. The last time it took eight inches of rain for us to start having the overflows versus what may have been a one and a half or two inch rain in the past. So we, we feel good about the progress, but we, we're still not proud to have to report overflow. So we're going to try to keep digging and keep finding where those issues are that we can clean up.
There are statistics that we could brag about, but we've chose not to, because it's not, still not where we want to be.
No, I don't.
I mean, I kind of want to brag about it, but I mean, you know.
We're, we're happy with some of the progress we've seen, we're just not satisfied that we're ready to be yet.
I can tell you, it's better than we were last year.
It's way better, it's way better.
We're working towards it, that's the main thing.
It's just, I don't know how much patience everybody has to give us the time it takes to get over the hill, we're working on it. Anything else?
Yep. Thank you, sir.
See how much patience you've got when you start tearing up the roads?
All right.
We're going to get signs everywhere too.
Another level.
We need to fix it, we can't go down that road.
All right, Mr. Johnson's here to talk about A-Trip to rebuild Alabama infrastructure program.
Yes, sir, thank you, council president, mayor, and council. Just to kind of want to make you aware of this and seek some guidance from y'all. Uh, part of the gas tax was this program, um, that a certain amount of the, the gas tax would be put out for a competitive grant, uh, for municipalities as well as counties to do infrastructure improvements. Do want to give you a couple of highlights, uh, there is some concern that they kind of sold it one way and delivered it another. Project eligibility very clearly states that project applications may be submitted for improvements to any state-maintained highway system, which may include local roads and bridges essential to such projects. Projects should be for public use and the benefit of the traveling public large. Uh, I have spent some time reaching out to ALDOT, trying to get a clarification, they refuse to give it. But basically, the, uh, conclusion is, is that that project really has to, uh, completely interact, intersect with a state-maintained road. So as you're thinking, we have two available to us, US ninety-eight, i.e. Greeno Road, and one oh four, parts of those roads exist within our corporate limits.
Wait, uh, it says state highway system, ninety-eight, one oh four, one oh one doesn't qual, uh, one eighty-one doesn't qualify?
Oh, yes, and one eighty-one, excuse me, I, I just dropped the road completely, completely off the radar, I'm sorry about that, uh.
It's also within the municipal limits.
And I really hadn't been thinking one eighty-one since it's ultimately getting upgraded, at least the story goes. They are guaranteeing thirty million dollars in this fiscal year application. The maximum, uh, per project is two million dollars. Now, when you do the math, that could be if, if fifteen applications got selected that were two million apiece, that, uh, that would eat up the whole thirty million, and we kind of know how many counties and how many cities there are in Alabama. So, uh, that's a big number, but doesn't look at.
Thirty million for the whole state?
The statewide, yes, sir. Uh, with it eventually accretion up to fifty million on an annual basis. Uh, you, we get one project application per fiscal year. So we, we, if we decide we want to pursue it for this year, we get to pick one, and that's it. Where the old A-Trip, you could put seven in and they could pick one of the seven that they like. This is interesting, but I want to read this to you. Local or other funding sources to supplement requested A-Trip two funding is not required. But projects containing a commitment to provide supplemental funding, i.e., put in the word match, uh, may be given favorable consideration by the A-Trip two committee, okay? So that's kind of, that's kind of the rules. The other thing is, and this is just a little gripe of mine, the, the governor issued the letter on July twenty-sixth, we got it on August first. So, and the deadline is August thirtieth, so they didn't give us a whole lot of time. With that said, uh, with the help of, uh, council president Burrell and, and his proxy, Mr. Boone, it looks like we're going to have the Gafer Road and US ninety-eight widening project on the agenda for the MPO. And at least at the work session that I left this past Wednesday, everything looked favorable for that. One of the projects that I thought about that if you were interested in pursuing, it is the same problem that we have at Gafer in Greeno, we have at Twin Beach in Greeno. There's no turn lanes, you have a high school, middle school there, uh, to the east and to the south. And when there's one person waiting to turn left, they can back traffic up, and then that one, they, they get the left turn at the yellow, and everybody's left behind. And, and I, I personally witnessed three cycles before you get through the intersection. This, that would be a qualifying project, because even though the improvements are on the, uh, the Twin Beach side, it directly impacts and affects a state-maintained road. Any, any project on one oh four within our, in our corporate limits or one eighty-one would also be, I would think, would be eligible.
But at Twin Beach, you have a gas station to cut through, Gafer you don't?
That's true. If you're going right, yes, but I'm always, I'm always going straight there, council president, so I, I, I never, the gas station doesn't help me.
I'm not saying I do that, I'm just saying there's a lot.
I think people use it.
So, so.
Mayor looking guilty over there.
No, I don't, I don't even go that way.
Basically.
My kids had to though.
I think I'll get a car wash, I'll wait until I change my mind, I'm going to go ahead and go to ninety-eight.
Between Mrs. McKean, who is our, our, our grants, uh, contract person and me, I, I have no problem preparing an application and moving it forward. It's a, it's a roll of the dice, we may get something, we may not. Uh, but, uh, you know, if you don't apply for a grant, you can't, you can't get a grant. So that, that's first thing. I'm looking for input from you, if you, if you want to pursue it this year. This is going to occur every year that the gas tax is in effect, so the increased gas tax. So there will be, you know, annual opportunities, and hopefully, we'll know the rules much better the next time and the next time. And, and if I was to recommend, if, if, if the Twin Beach, Greeno was of interest to you, I think we submit it as a hundred percent fund, meaning, you know, just throw the dice and see if we can get it.
And include in the, the proposal that the Restore Council did, uh, vote and approve the one eighty-one widening.
Well, they did.
That's what I consider municipal funds, but you know, you just put the whole picture in there.
Yeah, I, I can't really think of anything I'd recommend for one eighty-one for the fact that they're underdesigned for a complete widening improvement through most of our, our corporate limits there, even though we're not sure when exactly all that's going to get done. Uh, and I can't think of, and, and understand, the portion of one oh four that is on the west side of, of Greeno Road is considered city one oh four. That's not a, that portion is not a state route.
I was going to ask you about Roundabout.
No, I, I already, I tried to pick that one.
That was your first thought.
Yeah, it was my first absolute thought, and I said, no, that's just one step too far removed from the, the state routes. So I'm just looking for some input, if y'all, you know, because one, if, if you're interested, we would need to have a resolution two weeks from tonight.
So we think we're going to get through the MPO funds, the, the Gafer widen, right?
I do.
No.
I've been wrong before.
It was difficult, but it's going.
That's a twenty, that's a twenty eighty, so right now, we're still around that eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that's, so that's a hundred and sixty would be our match.
I can tell you that.
Pardon?
If they don't do it, everybody up there is a liar.
Well, maybe y'all two should just go for us.
How do you really feel about it?
Believe me, I said exactly how my thoughts during those meetings, so.
So, um, I, two things here, do, do we think that maybe we should apply for, uh... So, two things here, do, do we think that maybe we should apply for a lane to be added at Twin Beach Road, which is not a bad idea at all, but do we want to try to apply for 100%? I got a feeling, if I'm judging that, they're going to say, I, I want to, I want to help somebody that has some skin in the game. That's just, that's just me if I'm evaluating it, you know, whether it's 10% or 20, maybe we say instead of, you know, we could apply it 100% if you really think they're judging it, and they're not looking at that at all, but I, I really think that they may look at that as greedy and probably would be, look upon things more favorably where we're trying to share in it, save them some money, 10%.
Is there no, is there no counter by them in this, or is it, you, what you submit is either accepted or rejected flat?
That is what I understand. You get one application and the committee of nine are going to meet, and they're going to pick until the money is appropriated, so.
We, we did put for, for the MPO both of those streets with the turn lane, correct?
That's right.
And then, but, and we only are doing one right now. I wonder if we could add a little piece just for the Twin Beach, because it is in the county, right?
That is correct, but we, the, the, let's see, let me get this straight. Twin Beach on the east side is city road, on the west side it's still county, correct? And then, you know, and then, of course, the US 98 is a, is a state route, so. And, you know, the typical on all these types of federal usually is an 80/20. I mean, and if that's the comfort level you have, I think that at least you're, you know, saying we're willing to, to do like we would for any other federal aid dollars and do that. I'm, I'm just looking for guidance.
Can we, can we improve that west side then?
The west side?
The west side of that intersection.
I, I did talk briefly with the county, and they would have no objection for, if that was our choice of a project, that they would be cooperative and work with us, so.
What we could do is put in that 20% would be committed, but I, I think we still should put that into a proposal for MPO.
I don't know, can we spend 20% on that west side, 10%? Can we legally spend our money on that west side?
Oh, you mean for MPO?
For the matching part, if we were to match that.
I don't see why not.
Kansas County?
No, no, it is.
Kansas County on the west side.
It's still public right away, so, but, but the, the calculus would be that, that our, our 20%, if we did that, is on our part of the road anyway, that's the portion of the project, so.
I got you.
You know, so I, I don't think there would be, you know, any big issues there, I mean. And if you have another location that intersects a state road that you think would be a good project, I just, I have not been able to.
Those are the two highest complaints.
I would go with the, that Twin Beach at 80/20, because I, I think that, that little hint that you read, and the other, I don't think they would look at a city like Fairhope if, if we're not coming up with at least 20% match, if it's only $30 million for the entire
And one of the concessions I did get from ALDOT on the Gafer Road, discussing about what was controlling some of the absurd cost of it, is that the, the existing fixtures, the poles and the cable system that supports the existing signals, is spaced wide enough where you can do the widening and don't have to relocate anything, and ALDOT said that they would concede the point, that they would not require us to go to mast arm poles to upgrade that intersection. That took $350,000.
I thought that was a little low.
Okay. So in this case, again, if, if the Twin Beach has the same geometry, we could reuse the fixtures there, and you're just adding heads to what's already there as, as, you know, trying to keep costs in control, and in some time in the future, when we, when we want to do that, you can always go back and retrofit with mast arm poles, so. So, you know, we could, you know, I, I, I think that also, I think any project that's submitted that's maxes out of the $2 million is probably going to get set aside, because I think they're going to look at trying to spread it.
How many projects?
Absolutely, going to try to make as many people as they can happy. That, that's okay, too.
Well, if, if you're comfortable with that, we'll go ahead and get the application going and, and, and everything, and we'll have a resolution submitted to Ms. Lisa of support, and, and if you're okay with a 20%, we'll say we're committing to 20%, and I think price being all, things being equal, it should be about the same cost as the Gafer, so we're looking at about $160,000 match, so.
I think that's a really good investment.
Okay. Agree.
All right, well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. King, Greeno Road Corridor Overlay Update.
That is a mouthful. Good afternoon, Council, good afternoon, everyone. And so, Council, a brief update for you about that Greeno Road Corridor Overlay, and also provide the Council with some advance notice on something that's pending. And, of course, you know, Greeno Road Corridor is making, it's working its way through the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, they took action at their last meeting, and what the Planning Commission will do is on September 10th, they are going to hold a special meeting just related, just for the corridor overlay. And so to allow some additional public engagement, opportunity to answer questions. They won't take action at that meeting. As a result, the earliest Planning Commission meeting at which they could consider taking action would be the October 7th meeting. And so what we wanted to provide the Council with some advance notice about is that because of that meeting occurring on October 7th, the current ordinance number 1631, which is a temporary moratorium on development along Greeno Road, that would expire on October 1st. And so we wanted to provide the Council with some advance notice that it may be advantageous for the Council to extend that moratorium, and we wanted to advise Council the, that the staff recommendation would be to extend that moratorium until the Greeno Road Corridor is either adopted or rejected by Council.
So, Mr. King, when the Planning Commission takes action, what does that action look like? Is that a vote on a recommendation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So they would recommend to, with the exception of tabling, either recommend to approve, deny, or approve with conditions of approval that might be some of their edits, but that would have to occur before we can send it to the Council for consideration.
Is there a way that when they make, if they make edits, and when they do, there probably will be some edits that we could, could see that as well, because we'd like to also see it in a raw form. I'm not saying that we wouldn't accept it 100%, but, you know, maybe we, as a Council, would say that, yeah, they struck this, but we really want to keep that in, hypothetically. It's nice to see the, the whole instrument before.
And, and, Mr. Council President, that's a great comment, and what we've tried to do typically in, in previous actions, when an item is acted upon by the Planning Commission forward to the City Council, is show both the staff's recommendation as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation, because from time to time, Planning Commission have, may have additional requirements. So what we'll make certain is when we reflect the staff recommendation and the Planning Commission recommendation, if any edits.
Yeah. It could be in a, in an appendix or something like that.
Yes, sir.
Let's say they outlaw bookstores on Greeno Road.
Sure.
I'd have a problem with that.
We want to outlaw bookstore.
That's true.
Oh, wait, Greeno? Greeno?
Yes, sir.
Maybe not.
Hypothetically.
So, so Council members, that's a great point, and that is essentially a built-in process, but we certainly recognize, especially in this case, we certainly need to illuminate the, any, any changes or edits from recommended by the Planning Commission, so we'll certainly do that. Certainly do that. Council members, if you may, if you can indulge me for just a brief moment, can I comment on the, on the tonight's agenda just very briefly?
Absolutely.
So items.
Save us time and the agenda.
Yes, sir, and, and so Council members, Planning Department does not have any items on tonight's agenda, but Jessica Walker asked me if I would announce something very briefly to the Council. Items 6, 9, and 11, she's unable to be with us at work session today as she is meeting the teacher at her children's school, but she said she will definitely be here for the regular meeting if called upon to address those items.
6, 9, and 11?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and, and I, Planning, we have, we have no items on, on this regular meeting agenda.
Okay.
And so, Council, we'll work with Ms. Hanks on putting together an extension ordinance at the appropriate time, at the appropriate time in future meeting. So that would probably be in early September, Lisa, most likely.
That's what I would think.
Very good. All right, Council, thank you so much.
I thought you did a good job, by the way, at the Planning Commission meeting, I know that was a, it was a very detailed and lengthy presentation, but.
Well, Councilman, I appreciate that very much. It is my, my honor to be able to serve this community and serve this city, and that sometimes requires me to talk a lot more than I'd like to, but I'm happy to be able to do it.
Well, I, I will say that at our supervisor meeting Friday, he made a very funny comment and said that our new employee, which I'll be introducing during my mayor comments, that was his first Planning Commission meeting for the, for the work session, and he came back to work the next day, so.
That's right, so we're, we're.
We're very happy.
We're ahead of the game already. Thank you, everyone.
All right, committee updates. Council Conyers?
Sure, I've got, Library Board is taking the month of July off just, just for vacation and travel schedule, but they have already submitted a proposed budget for the upcoming year. I know that we're about to enter into that process, so that proposed budget did not include a build out of their additional space, it was too, you know, not enough time to, to figure out exactly what all they would need to do there, so that may come back at a later date with a recommendation for some build out of that space, depending on what they decide to, to recommend. The Historic Planning Commission, or Historic Preservation Committee is, is meeting this Wednesday, and they had submitted a draft ordinance to form a Historic Preservation Commission, and I sent that around for, for review, just for informational purposes. I think they would like to, would like to be on a, a future Council work session just to, to present some of their, their ideas with that and get some feedback from the Council. I know, again, Mayor, we've got a lot of budgetary items coming up, so if we can find a, a date to work that in, that would be great, but I know that we're going to be coming up against budget.
We'll, we'll start next work session for budget presentations, and then I would like for Council, instead of me coming and saying what works for, you know, you for the meetings afterwards, is to, for Council to look at when it's proposed, and by the end of September, how many times you want to meet, so we can get an approval on October 1st, or as close to October 1st as we can, so.
And then Environmental Advisory Board met this past Friday, had some good discussion in that group, and some recommendations coming forward from there, so I will, I will update everyone on via email, so that's it.
Okay. And I'm not scanning my emails, I'm looking for my calendar for some meetings, but anyway. Councilman Boone?
We have a Harbor Board meeting this month, but I got to find out when it is, unfortunately I don't recall it. Another night is the only meeting we've had, or we're going to have. I don't really have anything to report.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
Nothing to report.
Okay. We are putting together, it is tomorrow, I thought it was, so we haven't had Industrial Development Board meeting in a while since the passing of, of the president of that board, and we, you know, we, you know, we just appointed some new members recently to that, and so we'll have our first meeting tomorrow in the Dell Champs room at 5:00 p.m. So if you want to come out and attend the Industrial Development Board meeting, feel free. Probably going to be a little bit of a reorganization going on there, and I know that we have been approached by at least one corporation in Fairhope that's trying to go through some organic growth and maybe looking for some tax abatements, and, you know, when it's time to tell everyone, they, they don't like to, to, to tell their business, but when, when I'm able to, I'll tell you who it is, it's somebody that we're all familiar with, a very good company that's located here in Fairhope that's thinking of expanding. Also, on the Airport Authority, we have been informally approached about putting a flight school out at the airport, it's something that's needed out there, and they're talking about private pilots license and also up to multi-engine ratings, so that's just something that's being informally proposed right now, and I'll keep y'all abreast on that, so it would be a good addition to our, to our, our airport. With that, the other, I would ask you, that is on agenda item 6 tonight, I'm on the, I'm the liaison for the Council on the Museum of History Committee, and I would ask you to please support the item 6, the Fairhope Museum Advisory Board bylaws, so it just, they've, they've spent a lot of time cleaning those up, and there was some, I wouldn't call it confusion, but it's just, it, there needed to be some clarity in, in its rules, so I believe they've done a good job of, of putting together a real thorough list of, of bylaws. So with that all closed, committee updates, and department heads, if you want, if you have anything, I'm looking at you, Eric, first, so anything to share with the Council? You said no, and then you walk up and.
There's one thing I'll get a lot of questions about. Right next to the high school on Twin Beach Road, I've probably been asked this like 10 times in the last two weeks, the clearing you see on that east side is a mini storage complex, it's a big mini storage complex. That property is unzoned, it's in the county, they are meeting all ALDOT, City of Fairhope drainage, and building code requirements, so that is what is going on that property. And I've, I've been asked that a bunch about what's going on there, so I figured I would let you know when you get the call.
I, I just, every time something breaks ground, it's a Lowe's, from what I hear. It's always a Lowe's or a.
Not quite a Lowe's, but, yeah.
Chief Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Michael?
Uh, couple agenda, I just have a question.
Tamara, since you're here, anything from the library?
Just we're so excited still, we're moving forward.
Okay.
We've got a lot of plans.
All right, there you go. Jay? You're welcome. Anything? Okay. Kim?
I do have, just one thing, just to kind of get an opinion on, it's kind of like, we had last week or two weeks ago, pump, you know, go out, it was kind of like emergency, I called you to say, hey, what do we do? You know, it's over, it's over a limit, and, and that's what I'm running into, some, some of the utilities on the limits of purchasing, and so like the case that, Dr. Peterson, if he's still here, you know, the 10, it's low over the $10,000 amount, and then, so then we're having to like try to get something on the meeting. I don't know if you are interested in on the utility side bumping that dollar amount up.
In Public Works.
Just be able to bump that up where it's not an, you know, emergency that I'm having to get something on the agenda to wait, and, and of course, what we did is we ordered the pump, because it was, it was a lift station, had two pumps, one pump went down, we went ahead and ordered it, it's on the agenda, but it's already been installed, you know, and I'm just trying to figure out a way that we can not be stopped or having to wait for that meeting, especially if there's three weeks, if that's something you are interested in, you know, I don't want to work on it, it's like, okay, we don't want to do that.
I think that when it's like an, an emergency repair or maintenance item, we can come up with something, some language for that, what do y'all think?
And, and the other thought that I was trying to just kind of toss around, just, you know, what I know from the county, you know, the county side, it was checks, so every check had to go through the county commission to be voted on, and so we created a policy and was interim, and, you know, we had a list of things that could be in that time period that could be done, but then if it was, the chairman was, was one, the department head could call the chairman and say, hey, I need this done, you know, the treasurer would okay it, and then on the next meeting, as part of the minutes, we put it on part of the minutes, so these were things that was in the interim that had to be done, and I didn't know if that was something we could do a policy that, you know, here Jay calls me or comes to me and says, hey, we've got to have this done, I call the Council President, he says, okay, yeah, that's an emergency, we go ahead and do it, and on the next Council meeting, we just make it part of the minutes to let know that this is something we're doing. You know, just trying to find a way we can smooth things that, you know, if we're having to wait to another meeting and they've got a problem, and it is over $10,000, you know, we just need, you know, some more guidance or something we can tweak a little bit.
Thoughts on that, Council?
Do we have any ideas to what the increased limit would look like? I mean, what, what is the best, you know, I mean.
Yeah, as soon as you raise it to 20, then you get something that's 21, I mean.
I mean, and, and I know any increase.
It's lower than it was last term, though.
Yeah, I mean, I know that.
I mean, that's the main thing.
Some additional flexibility, but I just, you know, I kind of need to know what that.
And that's, that's going to be something like Jay and the utilities, because that's mainly where, where I'm seeing it, it's, it's not on the general fund side that we're having to get an emergency on a rate, you know, or.
If you get a transfer form that blows up in the middle of the night, it's $40,000, I mean, you know. I mean, you know, there's still got to be some vehicle.
That's right. I mean, but the $10,000, I do think is too low. That pump, Jay, that pump was just over $15,000?
Yeah.
It was just over $15,000. So, I'm looking at that, somewhere that's around the $15,000, you know. But I need y'all to have a comfort level. It needs a comfort level of us, you know, to do that, call the, you know, the council president and say, hey, here's the situation. And then, the next meeting, say, here's things that we had to do, and you could want to put it in the record.
Got an issue with that.
You know, that's where I'm trying to, the funds that we can just, we're not trying to fight fires. I'm trying to get a green sheet done. Or for tonight, Dr. Peterson is saying, we have something that's $10,000. Can we walk it on? Because I've got to have it.
Yeah. But, you know, and like, you know, that one, it's a simple thing, and it's easy. But it's not an emergency either. And I don't, I don't want to get into that habit of walking things on a lot and doing things in haste when two weeks, you know, don't matter. Sometimes when it's real small expense, and for our budget, $10,000 is not a big expense. I don't really have a problem with that, because it's probably a foregone conclusion. We'd approve it anyway. But it's a really, it is a bad habit to get into, because it just creeps up on you. Next thing you know, you're doing it for things that aren't as important or, you know, they're a little bit more expensive. But I don't have a problem if the council doesn't, if you want to. Because what I would do is, if I had to, if I had to make a call on something that was an emergency expense, I would call a council member. I'd call one and bounce it off of them. They'd probably call you and the department head and say, explain what's going on.
And that's what we did that day, you know, because I called you, Jay's in there. We went through the whole scenario, you know. And of course, I'm thinking, well, if the other second pump went out, the team's got a problem.
Yeah. But I think that has to be reported, actually, reported and voted on it.
I agree. But this all goes into the discussion we've been having for three years, and that's, the limits are too low. They're lower than they were last term, and we have a bigger budget now. We have to look at ways to be more efficient. I mean, the utilities are a business. This is an operating expense that there just has to be a better way to do business.
Yeah. We asked, and I'd ask Kim that question, was this, you know, do we have a maintenance budget that this could just come out of, if it's a maintenance item that just wore out, you know?
Yes, we do. But we still have to get every line item approved. And that, the reality is, is it's just, it stagnates efficiency and-
Yeah, I think this really goes back to that meeting that we had, and Lynn was, and she's not here today. I was going to ask her for an update, but she was going to bring back the recommendations from that meeting. And I would, I would just lump this in with that. It's part of that whole process.
And we definitely had a lot of discussions about it.
Well, I think we just, if we could do it all at one time, that'd be my preference to see it, all the proposed recommendations at the same time. But I certainly wouldn't have an issue with doing something to make things more efficient.
Well, we'll work with, I know those meetings prior to me being here.
Right.
So, I'll get up to date with the other staff members. And I just want to get a feel for a direction.
Sure.
I'd say it was a warm fuzzy for that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, good. Thank y'all.
Okay. Tom?
I don't have anything.
Anything out of gas?
Hot.
Yeah.
Hot.
Police? Shane?
We did.
RJ?
The flower clock is back in working, and the cacti sculpture at around the night before 8:13 is installed. It looks nice.
Thank you.
It's there.
Yep.
Can't miss it.
Can't miss it, brother. Big old bowl with spears sticking out of it. I say, get close to them. They look just like that thing. They just look like that thing.
Mr. King, anything? Did I miss anybody? Okay. All right. Let's jump into the agenda real quick. On item number five, Officer Nolte, if we call on you to give a police perspective on that, are you prepared to do so on the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me?
Please, it's Lieutenant Nolte.
How's that officer, dinner?
Lieutenant.
Oh, lieutenant officer. Well, if you say officer, you got them all covered.
Looking out.
Yeah. I didn't say private.
Mister?
Item six, I can cover that. Museum Advisory Board bylaws. Item seven, that's just some vehicle to negotiate with Baldwin County Board of Education to allow them, now that we own the Pelicans Nest, to allow them to use the Pelicans Nest for the educational purposes. And that, this is not, this is not agreement. But I need some input on what you guys think we should, would do with this. I mean, if they're using it for this, but it's our building, I mean, we become responsible for the maintenance of it. And-
I think the Baldwin County Board of Education at one point offered to move it to a school where it would have, would be more accessible to students and used more, because right now, it's, it's not accessible. I mean, my kids went there one time in 12 years. And I think if we can get them to do that, it would be really, really good for everybody.
So, Mayor, you're stating that if they moved it and got more use out of it, you're okay with that. Does anybody have any opinion?
I mean, I-
I saw Casey.
Yeah, she's, she's-
I didn't speak to her.
I do know they go a lot more now. And I think my, I know my kids go multiple times per year.
They could go a lot more if it was accessible. I mean, because it's, you have to bus them there.
Yeah. What, I mean, by all means, we want to keep that in Fairhope.
Absolutely.
At all costs, right? I always say, "At all costs." You know what I mean by that? I always say, the cost is in mind, but-
I agree, at all costs.
Okay.
Well, I'd even thought about, with the project getting ready to happen down at the pier, you know, that might be a nice tie-in, you know. But I mean-
Yeah, I always thought that it was there, because it was an easy walk through the bay.
Right. I mean, it is all incorporated into that learning experience. And that's what we want to do with this project as well. I mean, obviously, we would talk to them, but I think a more accessible location would be good.
Let me just talk to them and come back. This doesn't have to be quickly done. I'll come back with some thoughts once I talk to them and get a feel for what, you know, they're thinking. I'll get to you, Mayor, let you know what they're thinking on that as well. You can come along with me and find out what they're thinking.
Wow. I mean, thank you.
All right. Don't fall out of your chair.
I'm falling out of my chair.
Okay. Item number eight. Mr. Peterson, are you still here?
He's right in the basement.
Is that going to be RP, or is that going to be you, Michael, to talk about that?
That's going to be you. That's just for the increase in design.
Okay. Now, he mentioned that they had spoken to the residents. Oh, he was saying that was the Twin Beach Station, though, and they were going to do a little snag, right?
No, that's this one.
That's this one?
Yeah, that's just for the designs, without you doing other form sessions.
Okay. Yeah, I see that this would be relocating the Fairhope Avenue Station to Morphe. But you sent a letter to all of the residents there, right?
Correct. And I'm not asking for the increase in the budget to go forward with it, just to get the design done. So, then when we have our progress being taken along, we have a design to present.
Okay. That's, so you're asking for the $100,000 then?
Yes. About the 1.5. I'm not ready to ask for the construction cost.
Okay. Council, if y'all have questions, I will ask Michael or Richard. Item nine, we have Jessica's name by that, the extension number one for the professional advertising and relations for community development.
I can just say that-
What exactly, and that's not a lot of money. Remind me what they're doing.
This is the bi-monthly Fairhope Connect that goes into the utility bill, and also the flyers around town. So, this is, it won't be, it'll miss one printing before the budget passes.
Okay. Then, what is the, I'm going to skip over, I'm going to come back to 10, and skip over that, and then go to 11.
That's for printing.
Oh, this is for the printing?
Oh, she's back.
Oh, you're here. Okay. Okay, Jessica.
So, nine is for design.
Nine is design, 11 is printing.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And back to number 10. Who, Richard, would that be you?
I can speak to that.
Yeah, can you speak to that a little bit now? We save a few minutes. I'm kind of curious. Is this for something specific? Because the reason I ask that is, I know that he was on several of the teams that were presenting to try to be awarded the design and engineering for the working waterfront. Is this something separate? Is this a continuation of what's going on at the parking garage? Or is this just on-call, whatever we need?
As you recall, last year, we brought this to you, and you approved it with a not-to-exceed monthly, and of course, it would equal to a not-to-exceed annually. And for example, this, the last bill that I saw, he did some graphics for the Greeno Road overlay corridor. That was like three different little projects he's worked on. He did the landscape package for when we, when we redid the landscaping around the clubhouse at the Quail Creek. So, this is just on-call, based upon hourly rate. I do not think we got anywhere close to these numbers this past fiscal year. But the contract was, as you know, for one year, and-
Which were independent of other contracts.
That is correct. That is correct.
The miscellaneous.
Yeah. So, if Tom Cool needs some landscape architectural services, he can, and he will sign off, and it'll come out of his portion of his operating expense to cover those professional services.
He did Quail Creek, and did actually a lot of projects last year.
So, we'd like to keep him on board.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Richard. Item 12, who will speak to the Winterland installation of the lights? Would that be you, Michael? Hey, I just have one question about that right now. The, are we required to extend this for an additional year? Did we sign a three-year contract with them?
I do not know. I'm talking about that. I'm not doing it.
We're going to rebid next year in January.
It would look like I rebid on everything next year.
I mean, in other words, if we were to not approve this, is that reneging on the contract?
I'd have to look at the contract.
It's not going to leave us time to do everything we've been trying to do. And it's great that they've given four months of the year to our electric employees, but we're just not going to-
I understand. I just, I'm trying to, you know, just look at all the-
I think it was a year at a time, and we can go up to the three years. And my understanding from Didi is, you know, she had to go and ask, hey, do you agree to continue at this same rate?
Right.
So, I think that's the reason y'all are here to make-
Well, I mean, we're putting up more lights than they bid originally. I mean, the lights and the trees are denser now. And so, we just have a lot more of them. And of course, the growth of the trees, too, I mean, increases it every year. I know we did trim last year, but we did more trees. So-
Okay. Item 13 is pretty standard. That's an annual thing from Unit Software, licensing fees for that. Item 14, I don't know much about that. Who can speak to item 14, which is the Q Send, Q Alert software?
Jeff is on, he's off, but Jessica and I can speak to it. This is enhancing the customer service for our citizens, so that there is a tracking mechanism. This is basically a platform for taking in calls. But it's also giving citizens the platform for texting, messaging. All of the information is retained. So, we're not, we want to prevent people calling and saying, well, I've spoken to this person, I've spoken to this person, I've spoken to this person, and we still don't have a resolution. So, it offers citizens to be a part of the resolution. It can be tracked, and we can update them very easily.
Yeah. So, basically, what it's going to do is enable us to track these by address and by citizen. So, if somebody moves, and there is the same complaint coming from the same address, it kind of gives us this historical reference. Whereas now, we don't really have that option. It gives us a historical reference to better meet those needs. It also tracks it. So, if it has not been responded to within a certain amount of time, it pings the people who are connected to it. So, does that answer your question?
Well, I can go into it more during the meeting, if you need me to. But it's going to address a lot of issues that, when someone calls, taking the time to enter all that information for the benefit of the next person is time-consuming. But it's also very time-consuming to require the next person to call them back. So, when you have this type of thing, and you're responding in the way that they've, you know, asked the question, it's going to save a lot of time internally.
So, are there going to be somebody actually answering them?
The same employees that answer calls right now will handle all of this in an easier platform.
Okay. So, it'll be, it'll be installed on their computers, and then they will, is it fairly user-friendly?
It is incredibly user-friendly.
Very user-friendly.
Absolutely. And the ability to track the complaints and really to track the response time is super helpful for our citizens.
And it builds accountability.
So, they probably have most of the common complaints already packaged in this, and it's a drop-down and you check-
Absolutely. And it also integrates with Twitter. So, if people are complaining through Twitter, it kind of integrates with that and makes it a little bit more user-friendly. So, that gives us the Twitter as a customer service.
All right. Council, so you can ask Ms. Walker, Mayor Wilson, if you have any more questions when that comes back up. Item 15, I'll tell you what, we'll skip the rest unless the giant-